Well, I'm gonna at this point because Dan is in route by the looks of it. One picture I saw of him looked like he was behind the wheel, so we'll get started. So I will officially, at this point, open up Town of Southampton Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, September fifteenth, 2021. It's virtual tonight and it's also on cable television, 191. And our first order of business, and the major order of business this evening, because we have a light agenda, is the introduction of a new consultant that is coming our way, Richard Harris, former Planning Board Chairman in South Hadley. And he came highly recommended by our former consultant Larry Smith. In fact, to quote Larry, he said, "He knows everything I do and more."
Great. So before, Paul, sorry if there's feedback there. Before we go any further, I just have a question. Is this a situation where we're interviewing Mr. Harris as a potential consultant or what? What is the expectation here?
I think we're interviewing him, but on the same token, we're taking him upon the recommendation of Larry Smith because there aren't a lot of candidates out there. And judging by his experience, as he will probably tell us here shortly, that's where we're at. Before I go any further and ask Richard to introduce himself and give us some of his background, I'd like each board member to introduce yourself and just tell him of your experience and what your lot in life was and just to give him a little background on the board. So Cindy, why don't you go first?
Okay. Am I getting a lot of feedback or is that just my sense? Maybe somebody else needs to mute in order for me to not get the feedback there. Okay.
I have one, so go ahead.
My name is Cindy Palmer and I've been on the board about three years. I am very interested in the town, but I will tell you honestly, I am not an engineer. I am a nurse by professional background, been retired for several years. And but I'm interested in a lot of aspects of our town government and some of my questions will reflect that a little bit later. So I think that's all I have to say right now.
There you go.
Hi, Rich, how are you? I think you and I met before, in front of you for a project in South Hadley. So just to recap, I'm my experience in a professional engineer, mostly dealing in transportation and traffic projects. I've been on the Southampton Board since 2014-ish, somewhere around there, I think. I lost track of time, but it seems like it was yesterday. So basically, that's my general experience and board volunteer time, so.
Sarah.
Thanks, Paul. My name's Sarah Stein. This is my first year on the Planning Board. I was elected in May. I've lived here in town about five years. My professional background, I work in construction management. I have a degree in civil and environmental engineering. And so far on the Planning Board, I've been getting involved with the Housing Production Plan, working with the Housing Authority.
Good is. Dan, are you available yet? I think he's probably still in route. Well, my background, Richard, is retail. I was in retail for 46 years, 2026 as an owner, independent owner. And I was on the Northampton Planning Board for 10 years. And next month will be my 13th year on this board. So again, I am not an engineer. I have learned a lot in 20-plus years of planning. And I fondly remember when Mary Ford, the mayor of Northampton, appointed me to a member of the board. I told her, I said, "Well, I'm not an engineer." And she said, "Well, what fun would the board be if they were all engineers?" So from that moment on, it gave me a little bit of confidence that they'd like to hear from some other perspectives that might come from a layperson, I guess. So until Dan gets here, perhaps I can ask you, Richard, to start with just a brief summary. Everybody received your email that I sent, your resume and the contract. So why don't you just give us a little synopsis of that?
Paul, do we want Joy to speak? She's the Select Board Rep.
Hi, I can speak briefly. I just got home. I'm Joy Piper. I am on the Select Board and the liaison. I also am the liaison for Open Space Conservation Commission and Housing Authority.
Thank you. Richard, go ahead.
Good evening. I obviously didn't grow up in New England. I think some people can tell by my accent, which I've been told is pronounced. I grew up in Georgia and went to Clums College in Clums, Georgia, with a background in political science, community plan development, and master's degree from University of Tennessee Knoxville in master's science in planning. I worked in Florida for Regional Plan Agency for four years and then was Planning Director for Regional Agency in Georgia for four, worked for Clayton County, Georgia, as their county planner for four years. And then I was Director of Planning Conservation for, or Planning and Development for City of Baytown, Texas for five years. And then I had the benefit of moving to New England, which I had wanted to for years, and did so in '95 and was Town Planner for West Fork Road Island for years. And for last 22 years, I was Planning Director, Town Planner, Plan Director for the Town of South Hadley until I retired in July 10th of this year. And in the various jobs, I've worked on various grant applications. I wrote and rewrote and revised zoning bylaws, zone ordinances, subdivision regulations, wrote a number of different comprehensive plans, transportation plans, special projects. In South Hadley in particular, I became very familiar with the town meeting form government in Massachusetts and the unique opportunities and challenges that that presents and the different process that we had to go through in Massachusetts for adopting zoning changes. And also the ways Planning Board can use the regulatory powers to adopt regulations that could have beneficial impacts as well. And I'm currently starting to do some consulting work with City of East Hampton as well as Town of South Hadley as well. I've dealt with a lot of different issues over my 43 years of planning work. I'm also a member of the American Institute Certified Planners and American Plan Association. And I appreciate Larry's competence. I would say that Larry knows more than I do as well. So I think we both have respect for each other. And I do remember Paul's name now that he mentions previous project. I think it was a gravel pit.
A small gravel pit. It wasn't too big.
Small gravel pit.
Paul, Dan just asked if you could let him into the room. He said he's in the waiting room.
Thanks, Joy. Aren't you impressed with my expertise at Zoom?
Paul, your skills are getting better and better every time we meet.
Thank you.
We wrestled with that in South Hadley quite a bit. Initially, we had a different platform and Zoom is much better.
Dan, welcome. I would like to have you meet Richard Harris, the new consultant applicant here.
Yeah, first, let me just apologize for making the mistake of going to Town Hall. So I apologize I'm late, everybody. I meant no disrespect.
Dan, just introduce yourself to Richard and tell him your background.
Right. Nice to meet you, Richard. I'm Daniel Lavalley. I play the role of a Chief Systems Engineer on a number of international and national projects for defense industry, my role for about 20 years. So yeah, kind of a lead engineer on most many projects.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to ask Richard before the board quizzes you?
Nothing. I pretty much reviewed my background and I look forward to working on Town of Southampton. I've had opportunity to review the work that Larry's done so far as well as the materials he's working on and having an understanding of the direction and work that is left to be done. And I think that my background, my skills could help the board achieve your objectives.
At this time, then I will ask the board members if you have questions for Richard?
I always have questions. But Cindy should go first, obviously.
Well, I don't know about obviously, but so first of all, how do you know Larry?
Larry worked for the city of Westfield and then he went to work for Planning about a Planning Commission. I knew Larry when he was the planner in Westfield and worked with him when he was with PVPC. And then when he became a private consultant, we used him as well.
Okay. And what else about the Town of Southampton have you learned? Have you perhaps read our master plan? Have you read our open space and recreation plan? And have you attended any of our perhaps Select Board meetings? Tell me a little bit more about how you know. What do you know about the Town of Southampton?
Very honestly, I know very little except that I have friends that live in Southampton and I've been there quite a few times to visit them. And I have not wanted to delve into the details of the master plan and the regulations until I've had an opportunity to meet with the board and see if the board wants me to work with you.
So based on what you do know, maybe for your friends, what are our issues?
I think issues are growth and the.
Sorry? Say it again. Say it again, sir.
I think the fundamental issue is the growth pressure in Southampton and the need to balance that with the maintenance of your open space and the character of your community.
So when you say growth, specifically, you mean residential growth, commercial growth? What do you mean?
There's some of both. There's some of both occurring. And housing tends to be the one that impacts communities the most because it does have impact on your fiscal resources and your fiscal expenses. And commercial development tends to be more positive on cash flow basis for a community, but does also create traffic issues. And there's inherent conflicts with abiding properties and commercial properties that has always been facing communities.
So have you had a chance to formulate any ideas for the ways the Planning Board could positively impact some of our issues? Specifically, you said growth. Do you have any thoughts on that or have you not yet had an opportunity to do that?
I haven't had opportunity to formulate any concrete ideas yet. And again, I'm looking through the bylaw outline that Larry had drafted up and also talking to Larry and met with Randall at DPW. And I know there's issues with the subject regulations, issues with climate change and low-impact development recommendations and how to incorporate those into your regulations, but also how to incorporate that into your community goals. Because sometimes they do conflict and you have to minimize conflict.
Okay. Do you know anything about what happened in our recent election, our recent town meeting? Do you know anything about what we faced? Do you know the fact that we failed to pass an override? Do you know anything about that?
No, I'm not part of that, no.
Okay. Have you dealt with towns of approximately 6,000 residents?
In my 43 years, I've dealt with towns as small as 100 and as big as 60,000, 70,000.
Okay.
I've dealt with a range of communities.
So you said you knew Larry a little bit on a professional basis, which is great. And I do have a lot of respect for Larry. Let me be clear about that. He's done a lot of work to help us with our zoning bylaws over the course of several years since I've been on the board, which is greater than three at this point. And he's done a lot of work and the board has done a lot. And the board has changed a little bit over time. There's a couple of new faces since he started. But would you go back and redo any of the work he had done already? And why or why not? Have you read those?
I think that whenever somebody looks at work something else is done, there's usually tweaks they would make and mainly looking at what has yet to be done. And I might use a different outline structure for bylaw, for instance, because I'm not familiar with the general bylaw structure and I would try to marry those together. But like the Planning Board rules and regulations, I think that's a high, that should be a high priority because that is something that you can adopt without going through town meeting and is a very fundamental basis for your actions. It relates to using peer reviews, for instance. It relates to the application requirements before you. So I'm not going to say I necessarily do anything Larry did. I think the work he's done is fine. I might use a different outline structure. That's it. And I might want to focus on a higher priority. But having said that, let me also say that.
I'll come back to you in a few minutes.
And say that my perspective and views on issues and priorities isn't what's important. It's always been a Planning Board's priorities and Plan Board's perspectives. I may give as a professional planner my opinion, but as I used to tell the Planning Boards wherever I worked, ultimately, it's the board that makes that decision, not me. And that's important for staff to remember and consultants to remember.
Paul, do you have a question regarding that?
Yes, I think, you know, I'm just going to speak based on my professional experience with Rich, where I've been on the other side, where I've been representing applicants, particularly, you know, some big controversial projects where Rich has done a very outstanding job providing opinions and providing consultation to the Planning Board in terms of, you know, giving us advisory information based on regulations and what's in the bylaws as well as what's typically necessary for projects to be moving forward in line with local and state standards. As Rich said, he's here to provide his opinion in terms of where he thinks certain components or certain elements of our bylaws or regulations that we have need to be going. And it's up to the board to ultimately make that decision. Just to clarify, Cindy, I don't think we're giving Rich any particular leeway or powers that, you know, we have. We're asking him to be the consultant and help us with the organization of our bylaws and of our regulations. I think frankly, he brings a cross-section of experience, as you mentioned, that has communities as small as 100 and as big as 60,000. So there's a wide cross-section of these types of planning projects or planning development experience that he has that can provide perspectives that are outside of the box sometimes in terms of what we would be expecting or what we've been exposed to. Looking at that, I think a lot of what we have in town for issues, anyone can get, anyone can be mad with, go mad, I should say, from having to deal with the frustrations and the misinformation that is provided at town meetings or other events where there's a lot of misconception about what South Hampton is and what we do. So I'm laughing at the annual town meeting or the overrides that we have to deal with in the past and how people have misconceptions about how things are prioritized in town or not prioritized in town for that matter. So I see, you know, Richard's role here similar to what Larry has provided. And potentially, he seems to have more availability, obviously, than what we've been getting from Larry in recent years based on his health and his retirement status as well as COVID-related time restrictions that he has had. So, you know, in my opinion, I feel now that Rich's experience is quite extensive and I think would be a positive for the board going forward if we choose to hire him as a consultant to help us with our town issues.
Okay, but at the same time, our town is complex and our town is facing a lot. You already pointed this out, growth and financial fiscal issues. And we also face the rewriting and the review of our general bylaws. We have a big project before us in terms of the zoning bylaws. And I think my question specifically to him at that last juncture was, would you do anything differently with the bylaws we've already reviewed? He said something about he might, you know, sort of structure them slightly differently, if I understood that, and that's fine. And I'm just wondering in terms of his scope of work with us, would he be proposing in order to get these passed? And that's a critical point. Would he be proposing any restructuring or rewriting of the massive amount that's already gone through? It's been a long, long process. And I give you and Paul a lot of credit for staying with us all this time. And we want to get this done and we want to get it done so it's passed and we want to get it done so it's the right thing for our community. So that's why I'm asking these questions in general. And I don't doubt his expertise at all.
Go ahead, Richard.
Richard, you're muted. Richard, yeah.
If I can. Especially in Massachusetts where we have town meeting form government is particularly important. I've always felt that a bylaw that doesn't get adopted didn't really achieve anything because if it doesn't get passed and enacted, what have you achieved? Nothing. So I think ultimately the board has the burden of making sure that it is a bylaw that meets the town's needs and will have town meeting support. My role is to help you achieve that goal by trying to write it that way. My understanding, the board has spent a lot of time going through various sections already. And I think the objective here is to complete the rest of the rewrite so you have a complete revision that you can then hold public hearings on. And that is where you're going to get the most impact of how you need to revisit those. But I think it's important for the board to try to set a timeframe at that point of how long this will take to take it to town meeting. Because with zoning bylaw revisions, amendments, you have to go through a public hearing process. And it's important to have that hearing process be far enough in advance of any town meeting so that if you get the type of input that you want and it finds weaknesses or failings or omissions, you have time to go back and revise those, go on to the two-thirds support needed town meeting.
Yeah, true. Let me just interject on that. It's great, the hearing process, and we're not going to go backwards on this from all we've compiled thus far. I'm sure if we pick up where Larry left off, we go forward. That will give you ample time to then review the previous sections that we've already covered. And then by the time the public hearing process comes about, you may have some other ideas to interject in that. But to go back and have you go through each section with us again, I think is going to be time lost, but yet it'll give you time to make some notes and then we can review them before it goes to the public hearing process. And the thing that's always bothered me and it sticks with me because town revisions some years ago, I think it was probably back in 2000, the mid-2000s, when the last revisions came to town meeting after it was done with PVPC's help and it was rejected. So you go through the public hearing process. You give people ample time to weigh in on this. And yet, with all that work, it goes to town meeting and it got scuttled. So it's pretty disheartening that unless there's another end around that you can do this by section, that you would bring all this together and then yet be subject to town meeting, shooting that entire process down that is now we're probably in the fourth year of working on this.
And part of the concern is if you start, and I've seen this in communities before, where you have part of the project, part of the work done and then you, there's changes in board members and then you start going back and revisiting. I've seen communities almost never get to the end where they have the rewrite. And it's important to get that total rewrite so you can have opportunity to get real public input. And yes, you can do a bylaw set in sections. You can take it to town meeting in sections. The problem is you're recodifying your bylaw as well. And so if one section fails, then if you don't revise, then you don't have a complete bylaw.
Yeah, because some are tied together, correct?
Very closely tied together. Even the numbering system ties them together. So if you have a bylaw in this numbering system and then you've got the section that didn't pass and it's an old numbering system, there's inconsistencies in the references to one another. But you really do need to do this one in a comprehensive fashion. And to that extent, my advice typically is to get that structure to minimize the substantive changes so that you don't have the controversial items that maybe 99% of the rewrite has support, but this one section doesn't have two-thirds support at town meeting. And so people voted down, voted the entire bylaw down because this one controversial item that was added in. And I say that, for instance, when we rewrote the zoning bylaw in South Hadley with a consultant, we broke into sections, accessory permits being one of them. That was a very controversial item, South Hadley. It didn't, that one didn't even get one-third vote at town meeting. But we able to get most of the changes done by having the structure clear and the controversial items almost as their own bylaw, own one article. So the controversial items got to be taken on individually. And the rest of the bylaw, the meat of the bylaw that would allow the board to continue functioning well was one package, such as the definitions, the purpose, et cetera.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Paul. So I just wanted to clarify something, well, a couple of things. On the agenda, we had introduction of Richard.
On the agenda, we had introduction of Richard Harris and then we had discussion of the bylaw revisions. I think kind of to some degree, going back to what Cindy was saying, I think we should talk to Mr. Harris and maybe make a decision there. And then I think we should talk as a board. And it may make sense, Rich, for you to be listening in on that about the plan and the goals for this. Because I was taking a look at everything Larry had sent me and most of the files were last modified in 2017, 2018. And I understand there was a lot of work done at that time, but there hasn't been much done on it for a while and I understand why that was. But I think what we all want is kind of a refreshed push on this. So I think we need to, as a group, decide what the goals are, what the timeframe is. And Rich, I mean, listening to your experience, of course, it sounds like you have a lot of experience. My biggest question would be, what's your availability? You know, how many hours a week do you have right now? What's your reaction time? Things like that, more logistical.
Well, as I've told several communities that I'm not working full time.
I understand.
I, but I have the ability necessary to rewrite the rest of the bylaw chain, bylaw revisions over the next six months. So that by next spring, you can have a draft of it for your public hearing. And yes, that may not complete in the timeframe you desire. But I think it's, it'll move it from past three, four years to very much clearer time. Timeframe is also depend on how, what the financial resources are of the town in terms of how many hours. I understand it's $5,000 budgeted and 5,000 has a limited amount of hours that it'll fund.
Sure, understood. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then I guess just going to everybody else. Paul, Paul, Cindy, Dan and Joy, do you guys agree that we should kind of focus on whether or not we think Rich is the right person for this? And then kind of talk as a group about how we want to move forward in general, like?
Yeah, I think you, you hit it spot on, you know? I think there's, there's two separate items or well, maybe three separate items to discuss, you know? It says like, we have the, the potential here for a new consultant and we have to decide perhaps it's Rich, perhaps it's someone else, right? That's, that's a decision. I think that overall, as a, as a planning board, I don't know if necessarily the visions of everybody I see on this screen right now is the same. And we need to arrive at a common vision and goal for this project. So I agree with you.
Yeah, agreed. Because like Paul forgot all you were saying, it's really, we're the ones who set that, that direction. So I think I'm like you were saying, we should talk about it.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess I just wanted to go back to his, some of your, his initial statements, like you talked about a, a six month timeframe. In that six month timeframe, what would you, what would, if, if you were to be working on this, what would you do?
Recognizing that the amount budgeted is enough for about 65 hours of work. That would not, in my opinion, be enough to do all the bylaw revisions and subdivision regulations that have been part of the topic and regulations. I would work on completion of the items for section seven. There are different parts of that and provide drafts of all those sections. I'll also provide a draft of a section on site plan review. Look at your special permit process. And have those ready by next spring. And that's, that's very doable.
The way I see it, and perhaps my view is wrong, is the first step in this process is we have a, what I'll call a, in, 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 in an old structure to our bylaws that needs, that needs, that needs restructuring. And that's a project within itself. And then once the restructuring is done, then the, the rules and the changes and any adaptations would be easier to implement. Is that what other people feel is the the approach is first the structure and then the, I guess, specific details?
What structure are you referring to? I mean, you, you and Sarah haven't been on board very long for some of the previous ones we've had, but typically Larry would take section by section and review it and go forward. And to me, that was the structure. And taking all the comments and, you know, recording them as such, and then moving on to the next section. Is, am I missing something on that structure from somebody else that? Go ahead, Paul.
So it's true, we did a lot of work the last couple of years in getting this to where it is today. I feel that there's still a lot of overlap that has to be checked where we looked at certain sections over a span of two years where we might've said one particular statement in, in one section that might conflict with another section. That clearly needs to be reviewed and checked to make sure that we didn't paint ourselves in a corner with conflicting directives. And I see that as a task that's, that someone's going to have to take a look at because as we know, there's, there's hundreds of pages or whatever the total is that I, I think have been piecemealed. And I think based on the timeframe of us looking at it over the years, I think that inherently created these conflicts and us potentially not really looking at it as, as one whole piece that, that, that makes sense. So I think that is one, I don't know if the right word, structure change that you're saying, Dan, but that's my opinion. That's one component that needs to be checked, make sure, does this still make sense today? I know we did the work, but it's just the cross referencing more than anything else is probably what I'm trying to spit out here.
Cindy?
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm hearing this thing about structure. I'm hearing this thing about format. I'm hearing it from Mr. Harris. I also raised the question of what else do you know about the rest of the town and the other things that our town is doing? And I'm, I'm strongly convinced of the importance of the planning board within the entire town and what we're facing. And I don't think you can ignore this, okay? So I see two parts to what we need a consultant for right now. One is to finish the review of the sections that have not yet been completed because of the combination of things that Larry couldn't complete them and COVID, et cetera. One. Number two, I think we really need to look at the overall structure. It has to be smooth. We can, we have to avoid contradictions as Paul just raised. We have to make it very readable and palatable. And it sounds like you're good at that, Richard, that you have done this kind of thing before. It has to go to our legal review because that's part of what happens. And then eventually, you know, town meeting, excuse me, there's a, a step in between. It has to go to public hearing, town meeting, and we want it to pass. We don't want it to fail. At the same time, you need, as our consultant, absolutely needs to understand what else is going on in our town. Because there's sections in our master plan and our updated master plan, it's the same master plan, but we've, we've sort of revised priorities within it and our open space and recreation plan. To understand what the planning board's role is in these things and to make sure we're not going through this entire process only to step back and go, oh my gosh, we failed to recognize this is what our town needs. I mean, the, this has gone on for decades. It really has. We, if we're going to do a change of consultants at this point in time, you need to see this. You need to understand what we're faced with and you need to be sensitive to that. And I do believe that's a critical part of what our consultant needs to do. We cannot do this in a vacuum. And I think that's a lot with what Dan is saying and maybe Paul is saying, and you need to be able to do this. That's what we need from a consultant right now. And if it hasn't been stated before, all of us are volunteers. No matter what our backgrounds are, we are not being compensated. We have no professional planning staff. Paul Demon is phenomenal. He leads this committee and he answers endless emails and he leads a great and sorry, Paul, but I do feel very strongly about this, that you do a great job. You know, you can say thanks, Cindy, anytime you want, but that's how I feel. Because it's, we are a small town and we are faced with major fiscal issues, major. We are missing major professional people right now. We don't have an assessor and we don't have a professional accountant right now. And we have a volunteer planning, a select board. And if you are not aware of all this, then you're not going to be the right consultant for us. Okay?
I'm assuming, Mr. Harris, that master plan and open space plans and all the things that Cindy mentioned go hand in hand with this process. And you probably know that going in your past experience.
Absolutely. And as we start looking at different sections, I would want to look at those documents and see what recommendations were in, made in there that should be incorporated into the master plan. One thing is, for instance, when you look at site plan review, you had to develop criteria for approval and same special permits. Those should be tied back to your master plan, your open space recreation plan. If you have a housing production plan, et cetera, whatever plans you have should be tied to the criteria in the, in the zoning bylaw. When you look at revising your subdivision regulations, those revisions should also be related back to your master plan. If there's something concrete in the master plan that relates to it. So I think, yeah, clearly we want to look at those as part of the process.
Okay, good.
And that's reason, that's why I mentioned, that's why I mentioned the $5,000 orders not being sufficient. Well, the time go back to look at those and then incorporating plan, go back and forth, that, that takes time. And I recognize volunteer boards and you do a lot of, I've always been amazed that anybody who's served on the planning board without being paid a six-figure salary. Because it's, it's a un unforgiving job because you make decisions that people don't like. And as one planning board member I used to work with said, if you don't like the job we're doing, there's an election every year, run. And she never got any takers, but I, I appreciate the challenges you have. And, and, but I do, I will rely upon the board to give me the, the priorities of the community. Now, I may make my assumptions on it, but the board ultimately has to give me some guidance on what you see as what you want.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not what we're saying, Richard. It's what's written. We have a master plan. We have an open space recreation plan. You can listen to all of our opinions, but it is already documented. So that's really important. And Paul Demon, what, what is this $5,000? Is he limited to $5,000 in terms of consultation?
I was just going to ask Richard, why you put a cap on it? I was that, that figure, I, I don't recall Larry putting a cap on his contract. It was per hour throughout, you know, that, the term of the contract, but there wasn't a cap on it.
There's, the $5,000 order was in Larry's contract.
It was?
Yes.
Because I would not, I would not want to tie our hands, if we want to go forward this in an expeditious way, to tie our hands with 5,000 when we've got nine, eight, $9,000 worth of work here to do.
The question comes up, what is budgeted in the town budget?
We have no budget.
Because the town accountant needs to sign off on the contract. And they tipped it on sign off on what's actually appropriated.
Where years ago, because of budget constraints, we were stripped of a operating budget. We strictly are self-sustaining by fees that we collect with subdivisions and permits, A and Rs, you name it. So we have a revolving fund that, that has dwindled with the work that Larry has done. And yet we still have it, but there's no constraint on what we can spend per se.
And, and I saw his draft contract. It had a, a, a name on there as accountant who's long since left us. So we got to make sure.
Yeah, I changed the form after he sent it. I edited Vicky's name out of that.
Well, I did, Larry sent me his contract and I updated reflecting my, me in there and different timeframe for beginning because obviously it's not July 1. It's in September and therefore it couldn't be dated back to July 1, in my opinion. That's backdating contract is not a recommended, recommended thing to do. And we can definitely strip the $5,000 limitation out of there. I, again, I looked at Larry's contract, it had 5,000 orders in there and that's what I was working.
What's the board's, personally, I think we shouldn't put a cap on it. Maybe I'd put a cap at 10,000 on it because I don't think we, we probably, my guess is we maybe have 11, 12,000 in the revolving fund, but I, I wouldn't want to go beyond 10,000 on it. What's the board's feeling there?
I think the board should get hard copies of what's going on with the account before they make any, any judgment calls. That's just my suggestion.
What was that again, Joy?
That they should see that what's in the revolving account, where the fees are coming from, et cetera, like actually like an Excel sheet or something that we can get from the town or whoever the treasurer is to, before the board makes any, any judgment calls on money. Because I, I, I don't know, I haven't seen anything. So, I mean, I might have a report, but I don't know if Dan or Sarah has.
You're absolutely right, Joy. And this was, when Vicky was the town accountant and Joy Seipke, her assistant, I got a quarterly, sometimes a monthly report. And I have not received anything since the, since Vicky left and I have requested on one occasion and perhaps twice a, a copy of what the planning boards balances were in the accounts and I have yet to hear.
Okay, so that, you know what? That's something that I can, I can work on with Ed and whoever, and the new, we do have a new assistant accountant that's coming in starting, I think, next week. And we have a town accountant who was starting the 20th and 87th. So they are coming in, but I can also ask requests from Ed the planning board account information quarterly report. Because I think that's important before, you know, no offense to you, Richard, this isn't on you. I just think that it's important before you guys are voting on, on contracts to see the numbers in the book.
If I make suggestions, if you come, if you want to select me, that, there's two questions. One, do you want me to do the work? And two, the second question is what the contract should say. If I'm your choice, I would suggest that, and you come for the 5,000, you could prove contract 5,000 and then we get an updated number from your treasurer. We could always amend the contract to replace the number with the updated number. That they would expedite the process of begin the work.
I'm, I'm in favor of, of that. It's a 5,000 as written and then go back after an amended, if we, we have to.
The one question I have, Paul, is coming from a consulting standpoint, standpoint here, I now, I'm not trying to put Rich on the spot here, but if you were to try to look at the big picture, what do you think the order of magnitude would be to get us to the finish line?
Very honestly, I hadn't looked at that in detail because I was working on the premise that there's $5,000. Very honestly, I hadn't looked at that in detail because I was working on the premise that there's $5,000 order cap. You're probably looking at somewhere in the $10,000 range to get a complete draft. That's not going, and that soon is not going to deal with subdivision regulations. We're focusing strictly on the zoning bylaw and the planning board rules and regulations. Because I do believe the rules and regulations of planning board are fundamental to have, to be in function. Even if the bylaw changes don't go through, you've got to have that, that in place in a manner that allows you to function properly.
I've been, I've had my hand up for a while and my comment is, oh, is someone else?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure, in whatever we decide for work, that we're not biting off more than we can chew, right? That we're, we're, we're choosing something that is reasonable in scope and can be achieved in the, the timeframe we want. I think that's, that's, I think if we look at the project in phases, it's, it becomes more achievable. Like we talked about before, you know, there's a number of different plans we'd like to incorporate, the open space recreation plan, the master plan, et cetera. I see that as, as maybe a phase in this process versus the initial steps that you, Richard had mentioned. And perhaps laying out that long-term plan with, with those different phases, we could understand better how we would budget and complete this work. And, and bringing town meeting in, in, in regular, regular intervals of change. So we're not bringing this massive document with, sorry, massive amount of change to the document at once. Once we've, we've established a baseline. So we get that baseline together and then over time, over those phases, we incorporate the components that we'd like.
Joy?
I just want to throw another curve ball in there. Sorry.
You're breaking up, you're breaking up with me. Everybody else, I know.
I know Dan.
Oh, I can't hear, I'm sorry, Joy.
Joy, there's a lot of, a lot of feedback.
I think if we pause our video, it'll help Joy's signal.
Sorry.
In the last meeting. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Where were that housing authorities working on?
Please start from the beginning.
Oh, my gosh.
Nobody, nobody could hear you. Sorry.
Maybe I'll just call in. Maybe that might be easier. Can you still not hear me?
It's still a lot of feedback, Joy.
Well, that was interesting.
Rich, this is still better than Google meetings or whatever that, the product South had used before, so.
It's far better than Google Meet. That's, unless we switch to Zoom.
I'm just going to wait for Joy here to see if she can log back on.
I hope what you're getting is the passion to get this right. That's what you need to get from all of us, that we really care. We want this right. We want to see it integrated. We want to see it done in a cost-effective way and completely. And I think that's what I'm hearing from everybody.
I, I get that very well and I think that's very understandable and I think every community wants the same thing. And I have no doubt that we can do it. One of the things I would touch on also that Daniel brought up is commitment and time. Because I can, if we have budget, I could do the draft, but do, the board needs to be sure that it's got the valuable time to go through the rewrite as I provide it to you. And from my experience, it will always take longer than one anticipates.
Just to interject about the cost here, and I don't know what anybody else feels, but several town meetings, they always have, and special town meetings or whatever, especially the specials where they come up and we need an appropriation for this and that, that's over and above the budget. And you know what? This process is so important to me and so important to the town and this board. If we, we fall short of funds, I'm not going to hesitate to go to the town meeting and say, I want some funds to get this thing completed, because we haven't asked them for a dime since this all started. And several other departments always get rubber stamped appropriations above and beyond their budget. So I'm not going to be afraid to go and get some money for this if I have to.
Go ahead, Cindy, sorry.
I, I'm just totally agreeing with Paul, that we get this, that we do it right, we do it comprehensively and we do it in my lifetime and your lifetime, you know? I mean, I just really want to see this done. And I think if we have to go to, to a higher level of compensation, if Richard's going to be able to do it, let's, let's definitely do it. I do have a question. Paul Demon, what are the rules and regulations of this planning board? Have I seen those written some way, someplace?
I have a copy in my briefcase and they're on the website, planning board website, rules and regulations, which has been up for years, so.
I'll reread them. Thank you. Sorry.
Joy, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
Much better.
Okay, sorry. I was just going to mention, we're also, the housing authority, Dan and Sarah have been working on it, the housing production plan. Yeah, so that is, that's also, I, I don't want to throw a kink in anything, but I don't also want to ignore the work that Sarah and Dan have been doing, you know, by not trying to look, you know, look over the bylaws with that in mind as well.
Back to the budget item we were just speaking on, I, I've actually been thinking about this in the back of my mind. Because I, I had a feeling, you know, what we want is maybe more than we have internally as budget. So I had, I got online and I had done some searching and there actually are some grants from the state specifically for updating bylaws. Unfortunately, the one for this year, the, the grant application had already passed. But they had, they have grant applications up to $80,000 and perhaps that is another avenue of funding is a grant. And I wanted to mention that.
Yeah, absent, absent any clerical staff, that's, that's what we're up against. We don't know about these things. And that's a good point, Dan. There's money out there, but far be it from us to, to know, far be it from me to know.
Yeah, just because of my concern, I searched because I thought, well, if, with everything we would like to do and being volunteer staff, how, how can we do it? And really you need money and you need to pay a dedicated or more dedicated resource.
Well, we've done well to get through 10 or 11 sections, I think, in the time we've done. So there's no sense in giving up now.
Oh, I'm not giving up. Not saying that.
I want to change the tone of this just a bit because I'm sure there's going to be some more discussion after this, but I want to, right now, address the, the, the order at hand here of hiring Mr. Harris to be our new board consultant. And I want to motion for that and then I'll take up a separate motion on his contract.
Here's the part that my brain struggles and I would like to discuss this as a group. Is it right of us to only consider one candidate?
Larry Smith came to us, highly recommended, and there was no interview process for that. If, if someone else wants to pursue that, that's fine. We can, we can go weeks and months probably, or maybe more weeks. But I'm not personally going that route. I trust Larry's judgment. I trust this gentleman's expertise. So I, I'm not, I'm not going that route.
It's not, not that, I have really an opinion on it, on it either way. But if the contract is over a certain amount, doesn't, doesn't it have to go to bid? That's my only thing. Like, don't we have to entertain others? Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Harris?
Professional services do not, does not require a bid. You go by qualifications and, and even then, even those that do require bid, some cases it's $25,000, some cases $50,000.
I know it's a large amount. I just wasn't sure. It was like above $10,000.
Again, professional services do not require a bidding process.
Thank you.
Getting back to the motion, do I have a motion to accept the application of Richard Harris for the new board consultant for the fiscal year 2021, 2122, I'm sorry?
I'd like to make the motion to accept Richard's application for consulting services to the planning board for said years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Paul and seconded by Sarah. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye, Paul aye.
Sarah?
Sarah aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Dan?
Can I abstain?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
And I will vote to approve. So we have 301. Or 401, I'm sorry.
And the reason I vote that way, it's no reflection on you, Richard, I just, my concern is that we should look at a larger scope.
Now I'm going to go forward and ask that we accept Richard's contract with the provision of $5,000 on it. As initially drawn up, I have edited the contract to remove Vicky Morrow's name on it. And it just reads by and town accountant, whoever that should be to sign it. But that contract will be for $5,000 and if we have to amend it going forward, we can deal with that at that time.
What's the period of performance?
I'm sorry?
And what's the period of performance on it?
It's for this fiscal year from July, well, actually going forward until June 30.
Okay, thank you.
Twenty, 2022.
Thank you for taking my question before we voted.
No problem.
Sarah has a question.
I have a quick question as well.
Who's, who was first? So Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, to be honest, I started, I didn't get to the contract before the meeting, so I was taking a look at it. My only question was in terms of when you're sending in a bill and, you know, how many hours you'd spent on each thing. Basically, you know, if we don't, how are you going to document that? You know, you're going to say, okay, this bylaw I spent 12 hours on. I didn't see that covered in here.
My, my invoice would specify number of hours I worked. And I already rate and then any other, the other expenses that were such as travel, which is only another expense I can envision would be applicable.
Okay. And then I saw that it's, your payment is due within 30 days, but would you send an invoice every 30 days as well? So just so we don't get like too far out.
I, I'm flexible. I can do it every month. I can do it on a quarterly basis. It's whatever sits the board best.
I think given the $5,000 amount, we probably should have it monthly until we see our way through. But to answer Sarah's question too, Larry Smith used to break down all the dates that he worked on different projects and the hours, whether it was, I think he had a minimum of a half an hour in the hours worked and of course the rate was the going rate that he had quoted in the contract. But he had it broken down, so we knew whether it was bylaws, whether it was a subdivision, whether it was storm water, whatever it applied to, the breakdown was there, so.
I would do the same.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to see it to the 10th of the hour. You have an objection, objection to that, Richard?
I don't, can I, can I? In, in the world of consultants, the, the smallest fraction I saw was 15 minutes of an hour. The, the next high is my company does half hours, so.
I guess you don't work for the government.
The, the biggest problem with tenths means you're tracking every six minutes.
Yep.
And that, I've never seen a consultant bill on a tenth an hour, six minutes. In fact, I've never, I've never had track time to that degree when I, even when I worked for municipalities or counties.
So what's the lowest you would accept?
I could track a quarter, but I think half hour is more, more appropriate. So very frankly, if I only work 15, 20 minutes, I'm not going to even track the law. I'm not going to add that in there. If somebody calls me and talks for 10 minutes, I'm not going to track that 10 minutes. If there's a series of phone calls over the course of a day that can add up, or course of a period, add up to a half hour, hour, two hours, I might put that, but I'm not going to track 10-minute conversations.
Larry was a half.
Dan, Dan.
I, I have a question. I'm sorry. I didn't see the contract and I just, this is a quick, easy one. What is your hourly rate? I, I don't have a contract in front of me, so.
Same as Larry's, $75.
$75 an hour?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks.
What's that, about $200 less than compliment and page?
That's exactly right. That's what I was going to say. I was just going to say that. So first of all, it's not, it's not the same in a law field where, and, and I'm sure Joy could pipe in this, but you don't have that same overhead rate where that tenth of a hour, a fraction of an hour makes a difference. So, and, and I wouldn't expect somebody that's professional to be, you know, spending 15 minutes or, or, or spending three minutes and billing us 15 minutes, you know, that's, that's highly unprofessional and I wouldn't expect Richard to do that.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to say I was a consultant for many years before I was a hospice nurse. And I will tell you, half an hour is perfectly adequate as far as I'm concerned as a minimal.
Okay, getting back to the motion I'd like to be brought forward, then on the contract of $5,000, the end of fiscal 630, with monthly billing statements. And if we have to amend the contract, we shall revisit it. Motion?
Motion to approve the contract.
Motion made by Sarah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. You got this, Cindy. You got this.
Just giving you a break, Paul.
Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye, Paul.
Sarah?
Aye, Paul.
Sarah, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye, too, aye. 500.
Aye, aye, aye.
Right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Harris. Now, before you go or we whatever, I, if there's any, we covered quite a bit of the, on my agenda here, discussion bylaw revision. So I'm, I'm assuming, judging by the comments I heard, that we want to know going forward here, what, what the timeframe is and, and what we're going to tackle next. Richard?
Assuming we want to follow the same path you had with Larry, what my intention would be to sit down prior tomorrow and come up with a schedule for each of the remaining sections of when I anticipate getting them to you. So you can see what that's going to look like, because you're going to need to adjust your timeframe as well. So you can make sure you can, you have time to meet, to review those. So you can make sure you can, you have time to meet, to review those in, in that time, time period. I know some people know last half of December is usually they don't bother us with any meetings type frame from mid-December till about the fifth or sixth of January. And, um, if people have kids in school, then school vacation week, don't bother me then either. Um, so I, I've and adapted that over time. And, um, we've had several planning board members of South Hattie that I learned the Jewish holidays as well. Because that affected, um, meeting dates. And, uh, I didn't realize some of the holidays that began at sunset, which was right before the planning board would start. And so they couldn't meet then. Uh, so, um, I would do that schedule. And then I'd like to get some feedback from the board members, how that fits in with your plans as well.
You probably know our schedule. We meet, meet on the first and third Wednesdays. And, um, you can gauge by that. And regardless of what the agenda will be, unless it's extremely heavy, and it hasn't been, um, in the last several months, even building permits. So, um, I would like to see something keep coming at each meeting if we could. And, um, even to the point of maybe at some point, uh, where we are getting behind, um, I wouldn't be adverse to having a special meeting in between our meetings as a work session, um, so we could, you know, keep up the momentum. But judging by that schedule, first and third Wednesdays, um, and we really don't have any vacations coming up, um, you know. I think our meetings, uh, for instance, uh, around the holidays, you've got the fifteenth of December is well before the holiday there. Um, the seventeenth of November is well before Thanksgiving. And school vacations, I don't know, can't deal with that right now, but because those are down the road. So, uh, I'll get, I would.
I would tell you that I am planning a trip to visit my, I have kids and grandkids in California, Texas and North Carolina. And my mom is ninety-two, lives in Georgia. And, uh, uh, one reason my retirement was, I can't see them on weekends because California and North Carolina is a little bit far away. Uh, so I am planning a trip, multi-state trip where I fly into California, Texas, Georgia and what have you. And it would probably be the latter part of, uh, October. I'm trying to schedule around your second meeting of the month. So I probably won't be available the first meeting you have in November. But I would hope to have, uh, uh, some material ready for you in October and then your second meeting in November.
That's very gracious of you to, to think of us working around your vacation. I, that's think, that's admirable, but don't, don't go overboard about that. God, family first.
I, uh, my girlfriend's very concerned about my work because she still teaches in, in New Hampshire. And, uh, I've told her that, no, I didn't, this not gonna interfere with my visiting her or visit my family when I want to.
As long as you're not gone, uh, from, uh, let's see, uh, when did Larry leave? Like December first through, uh, April thirtieth to, to Mexico. As long as you don't do that.
I'm not doing that, no. But I will tell you that I love to hike, as you, uh, you see the pictures behind me. And my favorite season, people get a laugh at this. I grew up in Georgia. I spent first thirty-something years of my life down south. My favorite season is to be in New Hampshire in winter. I love the snow. I love the cold weather. I've hiked in minus ten, minus twenty, minus forty even. Uh, although I have backed away from minus twenty and forty past two, couple of years. Uh, but I do love doing the four thousand foot summits in winter where it's nice snowpack.
Maybe Cindy can give you a few leads up in Vermont.
I've done.
And Richard, I've also, I've, I've also hiked in Nepal. So we can talk about that, too.
Uh, I, I would like to say one thing, uh, uh, between Richard and Paul, while you're choosing our, in laying out what our first project is, it'd be good if you choose something that is, um, relatively small in scope. Let's get a, let's get a win under our belt, something that's, uh, not too complex. And, uh, I think it'll help, um, with, with our, uh, rapport as a group, um, to, to do that.
So we'll plan, we'll plan to meet in person, uh, going forward on this, Richard. So.
Well, that's on, yeah, touch on Daniel said earlier. Um, when I was at South Hattie, we received several, uh, grants from state on, um, through the executive office of energy environment affairs for planning technical assistance. And, um, we've used those to develop plans. We've also used them to develop proposed bylaw changes as well. And one of the things we can always look at is, um, after we get the zoning revisions drafted up, maybe for next year's planning grant round, we can look at applying for a grant to work on updating the subject regulations to incorporate the new planning documents as well as the, uh, to extent possible, um, green infrastructure lid to the extent that that's feasible. There's some elements that are, some that aren't. But, um, we can take a look at doing something like that.
I'd say that's, that's great. I'm willing to help support writing any grants. Or as Paul Damon had maybe suggested, we go right to the town. It, we'll see. But I think that there's energy here. And let's use it and let's get something accomplished.
Not to, not to take this over with grants. There's a, yeah, I was supposed to say that there's a grant ad hoc committee as well. Thank you, Cindy. That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I, I'm making the point. And I think Joy will, will chime in on this because she's part of the select board that we, we as a, a town need to work together with all the efforts that are going on. Um, and there is a grant, there's this ad hoc grant committee that's come together, there's ad hoc tech committee, there's an ad hoc, I don't know, Dan's on about six of them, I think, um, or seven. Um, but we're, we're, we're really trying to do a lot of things in our town simultaneously. And you, you know, we can't expect you to go to a lot of meetings, Richard, but we want you to know that this, we, we don't want parallel process to be happening. We want integration on some of these things. So, you know, keep that in mind.
I would, uh, recommend then you put, uh, any communication you have on these, these subcommittee meetings you're speaking of and, and copy him on it per email. So, you know, if somebody's recording minutes or whatever, then just add him to your email list.
One comment I would make is most of these groups that we're working through have some connection to PBPC. And mo, and most of the time, the representative we were working with is, uh, Ken Comia. Uh, I think I said his name right. So if you know him, it might be worth a while for you to have a conversation about some of the work that, that he is doing in town. I think that he, he could fill you in and it'd be, it'd be worth the town's money for you to have a hour conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea, Dan, because he's, he's worked on the housing production plan. He knows, he's looked at the open space and rent plan, the master plans, like he's very well aware of like what Southampton is dealing with and what they need to do moving forward. He especially spoke to the housing authority about, um, the importance of bylaws. Um, so it, yeah, it would be well worth your time and our time and paying you to speak to Ken. Because, um, I think that would streamline a lot of the process and, and your learning curve, um, with this project.
I know Ken very well. Uh, uh, him and I have talked a lot and I've worked for South Hattie. And, uh, he, he's called and asked me questions about different projects. And so we shared a lot of information. So I know Ken quite well.
Awesome.
Okay, um, October sixth is our, uh, next meeting. But you're gonna, is that the one you're gonna be going, October sixth, Richard?
No, it'll be the, uh, pro, I'm, I'm planning to, it's either the second meeting in the October or the first meeting in November that I'll be going.
Right. So we'll, we'll be meeting again October sixth. And, uh, Larry would send us via email the section you're gonna be working on. So we can review it and have it up for discussion that, uh, meeting night.
And my practice with, uh, as Paul maybe where the South Hattie was to have things to, uh, planning board members a week ahead of time.
Yep.
I, I wouldn't let consultants sent, send things to me, uh, Thursday before the Mon, Monday meeting. They had some in at least the previous Monday, or it would not, uh, it'd be a guaranteed for continuation if they didn't. So I tried to do the same thing with you is at least try to get everything to you at least a week ahead of time.
It's fair and reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll let you go now, Richard, if you'd want. And, uh, see you in a couple of weeks. Oh, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
If you, uh, are you gonna, are you gonna discuss the zone bylaw changes or?
No, let's, let's start with the bylaw revisions and then maybe when we're all face to face, if you have any other material, we can, uh, review that.
Okay. I'll see you, uh, October sixth then.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich.
Jordan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have on the agenda is if you have any, uh, committee reports from Dan or, uh, Sarah or Cindy, that any updates of anything you wanna appraise us of?
Can I ask one question about the, um, bylaw review?
Go. Yep.
So just if, as Joy mentioned, the housing production plan, you know, a couple of the goals have to do with bylaws. Um, well, the zoning, um, regulations particularly, you know, what you can do in rural residential, multifamily homes, all that sort of thing. If, this is what I'm thinking of specifically, this one, but in general, if there's any specific like paragraphs that we see as individuals. I mean, Cindy, you're very involved with the master plan and the open space or, you know, Dan and I are doing this housing, housing production plan. If we as individuals on the planning board see a paragraph that we'd like to bring up, how do we wanna go about getting that to Rich or prioritizing it as a group? Or do we wanna have a time to discuss these things? Um, I have a few things that, there, um, bylaws that have already been updated. You guys have already gone through them and I know that. Um, but I'm just trying to figure out the best way to approach it.
Well, there's a couple of ways. Uh, you could send it directly to him to, uh, review and, and insert, or, uh, when the time comes for public hearing, um, is another opportunity to weigh in and change language. The public certainly might have, uh, some issues or some, uh, additions they'd like to see in it. So it could be done at the public hearing process, too.
I guess I would prefer to do it before that.
Right, right.
Process. Cause I, to be honest, I mean, I have some kind of questions like, okay, we don't allow two-family dwellings in rural residential. Is there a reason? Maybe there is that I don't know. And I understand part of it's about maintaining rural characteristics and and maybe that's the only reason. I, I don't know. But I don't really wanna go to public hearing to be, I'd rather bring some of these things to you guys and talk about them. If there's things that, you know, we're setting these goals in the housing production plan. And a way that we can get more affordable housing is to have more multifamily buildings because that's how that works. They're more affordable. Um, and a lot of that, our regulations don't allow for a lot of multifamily housing. So I just, we don't have to have this specific conversation right now. Um, but I'm just wondering if do we wanna create a list of things like that and then have a time to talk about them? I'm not sure.
I think you should send your thoughts, anybody for that matter, if you, if you're reviewing, uh, what we've already covered and you've got some questions on things, to, to make note of it and send it to Richard to like thumbnail in that section because we are gonna go back and review them before they go to public hearing. So have them like bookmark them. And then we can address them, um, after we get through whatever the matter at hand is. But yeah, I, I, I perfectly agree with you, Sarah. Are there other issues that are gonna come up? So yeah, by all means. And then just keep a record of it and copy us on it as we go forward. That way there, um, in the review process, we'll be able to pick up on it.
Okay, all right.
It may be nice to use some modern technology like, uh, Google Docs. So you could add your comments to the living document so that we have it over time. It's a thought. So we could put, put them up there and put those bookmarks and comments in, in there. Um, so that we have, we do address them when we, when we make our round back. And, and you obviously would remember what you're talking about.
Sure.
Um, yeah, cause I think it is, it is really important that as a, as a planning board, we're not during the, the public meetings or the, the, we're, when we're presenting to the town, it's already clean, it's already polished. It's not us trying to add, the group should be presenting, uh, as a, as a agreed front, uh, our, our bylaw, right? So I think that's very important.
I'm totally in agreement with, with Dan said, that we are, we've really kind of gone through it, combed it through and, um, massaged it with the, with the wording we want. I, I assume we're gonna go to public hearing without much discussion to, from the public. We want the public to come forward and say things if they have comments, but not that we're gonna be debating it at a high level. It seems to me in a public hearing, it's certainly not at town meeting. We really wanna look really coordinated on that. That's my feeling. So I agree with what both Paul and Dan are saying, that we talk about it here, whether we do it on a Google Doc and go from there and let Richard look at that and, and chime in. Totally agree with that.
I do wanna address something that our very first meeting Cindy asked about that was brought up. And I don't think, um, Paul Frugal, you were at the meeting. But it's one of those things that Sarah mentions about, you know, going back and looking at some of these revised bylaws. Since then, that case came down about the Airbnb and we, you know, Cindy, you haven't been in a meeting since then. But, um, I did review the bylaws and our town doesn't seem to allow it. So like, what do we do with about that? Like, I think that has to be a discussion we as a planning board have before you bring that up at, at a, at a public, at a town meeting. I mean, to, yeah, cause that, that's stuff people are gonna, are really looking at now. But it was a very public case. Um, and you don't wanna, we don't wanna end up in litigation repeatedly over something that we should have gotten back and fixed, things like that. Um, just keeping it in mind. I mean, I think Paul was right about going back and making things sure, things aren't conflicting with each other. Make, we just, I, you know, making sure these plans complement each other and not contradict each other. Open space, the housing authority, the master plan. Um, I think that's the concern from my point of view.
Thank you.
Sarah, do you have the technology to make one of those Google documents? Or a document that we could all share to add our comments to?
I, I do. Were you thinking, um, a list with notes referencing the, or were you thinking that upload the full Word document versions of everything Larry had had to date?
Yeah, and then we can add, uh, comments or edits or.
I like that second suggestion.
Yeah, I, I have what Larry had sent me in Word, everything he had worked on. The ones going forward, I assume we'll wait until Rich takes the first pass on them or, um, and then he can add them. Um, I don't have those in Word. I just, I have the PDF from the website. But, um, but the six, or so that Larry had sent, I can add those to a Google thing and share them. And then we can go on and put any flags of things we think we need to go back and look at.
I, I hope I'm not overstepping our bounds by suggesting that, uh, Paul.
No, not at all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that, that would answer my question to the email I sent Paul being like, can I? I don't know if I have all of these bylaws, revised bylaws. I think I need the, the rest of them. So yeah, Sarah, if you did that, that would be amazing. Take something off of Paul's plate.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. I don't mind doing. Yeah, no, that sounds good. I don't mind doing that at all. I'm going to upload what Larry sent me, but if somebody, maybe Paul Fergal or Paul Damon can take a look and make sure it's everything Larry had done, that I have everything, just because he'd sent me a couple of emails. That'd be appreciated. Once it's up there, I'll do it. It'll be probably this weekend and I'll send something out.
Thank you, Sarah. That, that would be majorly helpful. Good idea, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
I think we should mention the HPP and the, the work for the, the, the meetings we have coming up. Cause we have some public meetings coming up where we're, we're reviewing what PVPC is put together with, to get public comment on it. I forget the date. Sarah, do you remember the date that's happening?
September 22nd.
22nd.
Thank you. Teamwork on that.
At 6:30 over Zoom.
Oh, Zoom, eh?
Yeah.
We'll see how it goes. Maybe try to, try to break out rooms and all that fun Zoom stuff.
But I'm looking forward to that and I think that's great. And the day before, there's another public meeting regarding three specific general bylaws that our town is facing. And I don't know if that's over Zoom. Is that over Zoom? Does anybody know? The 21st?
No, I think that's in person. I don't remember. Let me look. It's on me. No, I have the community meeting prep on there.
Those are general, correct?
And they're, they're very interesting. Because one of them's, go ahead, Joey. I'm sorry.
They're soliciting numbers on how residential houses and noise. Nuisance, nuisance, sorry, nuisance.
And noise.
And noise. Nuisance and noise, soliciting and numbers on houses.
And you could submit your comments via email beforehand if you like.
Yeah. And they're going to read them out loud. So that's why I think that it is in person.
It is. It's at town hall. I'm just looking at the website.
Yeah.
I think the deadline for submitting has passed. I think it was the other day.
Ah, thank you.
So don't submit them.
Yeah, don't listen to me.
Also, I am going to make a plug along the lines of Housing Authority. We, if you guys know any renters, tenants, landlords who don't have tenants paying rent or need help paying rent, Southampton has a great program that, and we need, we need people to apply and give them money to, especially since the eviction moratorium was lifted. So if you know anyone who might need some help paying their rent the next month or so, we, Southampton has money and you can direct them to me or Housing Authority. And I think it's also on the town website too. But I'm going to just make that plug everywhere I go.
And it's good that Cindy is an almaner knows about it, of course.
Well, yeah. Well, more than that, the almaners, I'm the chair of the almaners. And we actually have some funds that could support a town resident or family in need. There are some guidelines. Any questions of any individual or family that you have, please direct it to me. It's highly confidential. It's not specifically rent only, but it's a basic needs. So, you know, that is something that has nothing to do with the planning board, but thanks, Joy, for plugging that. And Dan?
Yep.
Any other committee reports?
Oh, East Street Bridge is, is going to be happening soon. There was some news about that. I think we have a site visit coming up for, at least for Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So that's good news.
Coming like in October, like the first week of October, they're going to start drilling, like big, yeah, it's happening, guys.
And specific to the open space committee, Kestrel Land Trust has identified that they're going to put focus on certain towns for land conservation. And Southampton is listed as one of those towns. I'll be working with Mark Wamsley and maybe others from Kestrel Land Trust. We're going to be meeting with a, a pretty major property owner, large, large amount of acreage this coming week. And so there's going to be a lot of effort to identify lands for, what we already have criteria for identifying lands. But Kestrel is very eager to meet their goals for land conservation and we have a lot of open space. So that's just a general statement of what we're doing.
Very cool. Very good. I received, and you probably saw it, the letter from Ty and Bond I had to submit, which I did this afternoon, a list. They wanted to know all the stormwater permits that we issued in fiscal year 2021. So I sent them. It was only like, stopped top of my head. I think there was five. I don't think there was six and, and they were all residential. And they're doing it for their MS4 report to the town. It was interesting, some of the criteria they're looking at. Permits issued, inspections, site plan review, as-built. And I'm saying myself, I think any as-built on those, I mean, I don't know who that's going to lie on all these inspections and as-built.
Paul, I think those are on the bigger scale site plans. I think those, those refer to like the commercial and bigger industrial or even non, non-residential units.
So I, I answered, you know, none of the above on the inspections and whatever. But as I say, they were residential. So.
That's actually a question I have. So we don't require making as-built plans for residential updates, right?
No.
Yeah, of course.
In fact, is there, with the new requirements now, they're asking for as-built for commercial, correct, Paul?
Those are, yeah, I believe that's in there as a, as an as-built. Well, particularly we're having those on subdivisions as well, right? So those are, those are required for those particular projects that we have in town. But I know at the minimum, that is one thing we require.
Yep. Does anyone have any other business of any sort or comments they'd like to make or whatever?
No, I, I, I was impressed with Rich and I'm, and I'm excited for him to learn about Southampton. I just wanted to say that for the record, if that didn't come across. He seemed very experienced and he seemed like he would, will be great to work with.
Yeah, there's no, there's no question to me about his experience. I just think that he's going to learn about Southampton after the contract is signed more and more. He's going to make it a point to, if he wasn't hired going in, I'm not quite sure he, he'd want to know all the details. But seeing as he signed the contract, it's going to be vital that he, that he does know all the moving parts going forward.
Frankly, he's coming from South Hattie, which is light years ahead of us. And I'm going to put it in those terms.
So maybe we can get up to speed then, right, Paul? With his help. Do I have any other further business? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
What are you doing up there?
I was waiting for Paul to second it.
Motion's made by Cindy. Is it Dan the second or Paul?
No, no, Paul, Paul. He wanted to second the one earlier today and didn't get it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night. Have a good week. See you in a few. Thank you, Joy.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night now.